Good evening. At 6:30 on March the 12th, 2024, the City of Baskdrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or call it executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. I am now calling this meeting to order. We are very pleased this evening to have two young gentlemen who are members of the bi-district basketball champions from Cedar Creek High School. And when I call your name, if you'll step up here. At point guard, we have Mr. Robert Conrad. And at power forward, Micah McDonald. Gentlemen, if y'all come right up here. If everybody please rise. Y'all can.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every single justice of our own. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's give these champs a round of applause. Wait a minute, guys. Wait a minute, guys. We have official picture taken. Thank y'all very much. If you will remain standing, I'd like to call upon Mr. Robert Oliver, one of our police chaplains, to deliver our invocation.
Yes, sir. Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. You never leave us nor forsake us. Your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will lead us home. Thank you for making each person in this room, every person we meet, every citizen in this city, in your own image, with the dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for calling. You have given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation and to love our neighbors as ourselves. We thank you tonight, God, for these, your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, our city council members. And we give thanks for the service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. We all come to this room tonight as complex human beings carrying burdens, joys, hopes, trusting that you alone can hold us together, oh God, in your love and peace. Help us, Lord, to trust you more, more than our fears and our wounds and even our accomplishments. May we lean on your everlasting arms tonight. So we pray that you would be glorified tonight through the decisions of this council. We pray that we would have the eyes to see how our lives are all connected, how our common good is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable. We pray that your kingdom would come here in Baskdrop as it is in heaven through your power working in each of these, your servants. May your truth be revealed. May your light shine brighter. May the voices of those most silenced be heard loud and clear. Defend their cause, oh God, through this governing body tonight. We ask this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Y'all may be seated. Our chaplains are truly a blessing to our community. We'll move now to item 4A, Mayor's Report. Real short report. I think a couple of things that occurred last Tuesday are indicative of the uniqueness of our community. Last Tuesday at lunch, we had our mayor's prayer breakfast. It was put on by the Baskdrop County Ministerial Alliance, this year led by Pastor Esen, and had great guest speakers and some really heartfelt prayers for our community. And the Ministerial Alliance really does outstanding work. And then that evening, we had a community a community conversation relative to the Baskdrop County African-American Cultural Center and Freedom Colleges Museum to get input from the community. I think it's very important that we, especially in this historic town, embrace all the history that we can because it is our common history that we have out there. We think we entered into some really good dialogue. There's some really good ideas in there and a partnership between the cultural society or the culture, the African-American Cultural Center, the city, and the other groups in there. I think that we're going to build something that Baskdrop can be extraordinarily proud of. That pretty much ends my report. Councilmember Meyer, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Just a couple of quick things. I just want, last Thursday was the Farm Street Opry. If you haven't been, you really are missing something. It is fantastic. It's the first Thursday of every month at the Convention Center, 7:00. And I just want to thank Kathy Danielson and her whole crew. They coordinate this. This, the audience of over 200, 230-something people that came in, a lot, most of them from out of town, made the comments after this last show. This is the best show they've ever had. So thank you, Kathy, for that. And one other really quick thing. This Saturday, don't miss out at noon to 2:00 down at the museum on Main Street. Sarah Price is going to be performing the music in the museum. So don't miss that.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Crouch.
No, I don't have anything this week. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Councilmember Lee.
Good evening, Baskdrops. Of course, I always have something. So I kind of want to piggyback on Councilmember Meyer, or actually, the mayor's comment about community. Between Christmas and even before Christmas and Mardi Gras and the last few weekends have just been event after event after event after event. And I think Judah Ross from our Planning Commission said, "We talk a lot about what authentic Baskdrop is." And he's absolutely right in the statement that he made is it's the people. Every event that I went to, everyone was having fun. I went to the Baskdrop County Animal Shelter, held a karaoke fundraiser. Yes, I did sing. I did not win, but I participated in that. The Opera House, Grumpy Old Men is running right now. Bird Lover Weekend is going to be coming up in May. Everything from the rodeo, the cult classic, like, there was so much stuff going on in Baskdrop. And I again say that none of it can be done without the members of our community and our boards and commissions and organizations. And I really just want to silently give an applause to everyone that does everything they can to make Baskdrop a fun place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last but not least, Councilmember Plunkett. Oh, no, it's least. Thank you. Thank y'all very much. We will move now to item 4C, our city manager's report. And we know she has something that she's going to add.
Mayor, my report is rather lengthy. And since we have some folks online awaiting their proclamation from Evangeline Parish, I'd ask that you skip me, go to them, and then perhaps circle back to me.
Good idea. You know, we're very fortunate in that that other people recognize community. And when we hosted our Mardi Gras here, we had our friends from Evangeline Parish come in and show us what we were doing wrong and showed us what we needed to do right. And we really appreciated their endeavors on our behalf. And we are very fortunate to have them zoomed in. And if Colin, if you can put them on the screen. I see, I see a couple of my eyes peeking. They may want to adjust their camera. Look like alligators out there. Patience as we deal with the technical issues. Are y'all there, Evangeline Parish?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Oh, okay, great. I didn't, I'm sorry if I missed that cue.
We're with you. We're with you. We have a, we have a proclamation that we want to, want to, want to present to y'all, read and present to y'all. So if y'all are ready, I'm going to. Well, now more people are walking in. Y'all must have been in the kitchen.
I have a game behind me. And we also have someone from KBBI, the radio station. And we have a couple of other of our board members that are joining in locations.
Cool. Cool. More the merrier. Now bear with me. Here's our proclamation. If you can't hear me, let me know and I'll talk louder. Whereas the City of Baskdrop, Texas is known for its rich heritage, hospitality, and a rich harvest of classic Texas folklore. And whereas the City of Baskdrop, Texas extended an invitation to Evangeline Parish, Louisiana, to participate in the City of Baskdrop's inaugural Mardi Gras celebration. And whereas, as the City of Baskdrop, Texas, Mardi Gras took center stage from February 1st, 2024 through February 3rd, 2024. Members of Evangeline Parish Tourism Board, residents, entertainers, storytellers, and media added their vibrant traditions and rich folklore to the celebration. And whereas Evangeline Parish, Louisiana, stands as a cultural haven preserving Cajun traditions in the heart of the state. And whereas the inaugural cultural exchange event was a jubilant celebration of Cajun culture and distinctive Corriere de Mardi Gras customs. If I didn't say that right, probably, well, I know I didn't. Whereas our neighbors from Evangeline Parish, Louisiana, showcased their cultural traditions featuring music, dancing, and cuisine. They won the gumbo cook-off. Whereas the partnership between Evangeline Parish, Louisiana and the City of Baskdrop, Texas afforded an unforgettable Mardi Gras celebration of revelry, culture, and community spirit unfolding in the heart of Baskdrop, Texas. Now therefore, I, Law Nelson, Mayor of the City of Baskdrop, extend gratitude to the Evangeline Parish delegation for bringing the spirit of Mardi Gras to the first inaugural Mardi Gras celebration in the City of Baskdrop. Thank y'all.
So don't mess it up. So thank you, Mr. Mayor Nelson. And thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Plunkett. And all of your members for including us in this monthly meeting. And we are so pleased for you to present this proclamation to us. It really means a lot. It has truly been the pleasure of the Evangeline Parish Tours Commission, our board members, and other local leaders in Evangeline Parish to have the opportunity to share our culture, our traditions, and our food with the citizens of Baskdrop. Joining me tonight are several of our Evangeline Parish Tours Commission board members and as well as a couple of people from KBBI and our Volki Bayu Festival Board who work really hard to promote their festival and promote our culture. We all would like to thank all of the many individuals in Baskdrop who worked long hours to pull together the first-of-its-kind Mardi Gras event in Baskdrop. We recognize that this will be a unique experience for many of your citizens. And we would particularly like to thank Kathy Danielson, Ishmael Harris, and Steve, my personal hero, and so many other of the city workers that go unnamed that worked, the community volunteers that worked to support this project. We look forward to continuing our relationship with you guys. And we really are looking forward to Mardi Gras next year. Thank you so much.
Outstanding. Well, I'm going to assume that none of y'all are going to drive over here to pick up the proclamation. So we're going to get it in the mail to y'all, for sure. And the friendship continues. Thank y'all.
And that is our. Thank you. We want our friendship to continue.
That was outstanding. Now we will move to item 4C, our city manager's report.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have a lot of information to cover. You do have the report, hard copy, in front of you. For obvious reasons, not everything is listed on PowerPoint slides because that would be a lot of information to cover. First, I want to say our Main Street Board is going through a period of transformation. And we've had multiple resignations. We have a very active recruitment. As Councilmember Lee stated, many, many, many events and many of our board members expressed not enough time to work in their personal lives and then also participate in the board. So we go through continued review of our Main Street work program and really have to make some hard decisions moving forward that the board will meet. We do have the Main Street manager position. We have seven very good applications that the board chair and the vice chair and I will call through again. And then the board will also participate in the interviews of that Main Street manager. The Gallo mural, the agreement has been completed by legal. I reached out to the artist this afternoon. He needs to sign that agreement and then initial payment can be made this week. That would meet the timeline for completion. The conversion of MyGov to MyGovernment Online. Fleet and Facilities will be the initial deployment of the new software. They are already going through setup. And council should expect an inter-local agreement as the software creator is actually a local government. So we don't have to go through buy board or anything like that. It's an inter-local agreement. And we should have expected rollout in Development Services and others later this year, including Code Enforcement. Board and Commission work plans. This continues to be a work in progress. DEI has offered to host a work plan party to seek overlaps. But boards and commissions still need more direction. And this likely will not occur this year. There are so many other open items and issues that this has fallen too low on the totem pole. I'm hoping I can click. Our Loop 150 corridor study remains a very high priority. We're awaiting CAMPO to present to the city council and the mayor to appoint council members to sit on a subcommittee. As you may or may not be aware, this Loop 150 would transition all of Chestnut into things that perhaps are not suitable for the city and the amount of traffic that travels down that area. So it's very, very important that council be involved, that the residents have a voice before final decisions are made in that regard. We continue the development code revamp. We had two code rodeos, and only the first was well-attended. And I say, most of those people were accidentally there because we had just talked about the Mayfest rodeo. And a lot of them thought we were going to be talking about the rodeo. So a lot of angry people and some folks left that day. But we do have a joint workshop between Planning Commission and the Historic Landmark Commission to be held on March 28th. And this stems from this authentic Baskdrop and, and things we can do to protect. There is a joint meeting and a walking tour to be held with council, the Planning Commission, and the Historic Landmark Commission on Saturday, April the 6th. And that starts at 10:00 a.m. Look for that on your council calendars. And we are currently working in reverse of the master drainage plan studies. Staff has put lidar together. And in those areas that are most flood-prone are the areas we're going to be looking at decreasing density and decreasing impervious cover amounts. And those mostly stem along the areas of the Gill's Branch. And in regards to the drainage master plan, we continue to work toward acquisition of some of those properties that can serve as detention basins or mitigate flooding downstream. Okay. You saw the social media on the Iron Bridge work that began this week. The inspection will inform the design and repairs. So the folks that are out there are harnessed. They do have their security, their safety vests on. We've had a lot of folks wanting to come up and talk to them. Please stay off the bridge. We want the project to stay on, on task and on budget. But that's super exciting. Folks are really, really excited about that work. The Parks Master Plan. We continue the inventory of existing park equipment and condition. It's near completion. And then we have to develop a plan to address how we're going to fix those things that need immediate fixing. The council did put some excess surplus money into Mayfest Park that will not all be required by Mayfest Park. And so I am talking to Terry about what improvements or what repairs to equipment, et cetera, need to be done and can be done within that same pocket of money. At Mayfest Park, the dirt work, the chairs, and the announcer box are to be completed by mid-April 2024. And that's a good thing because we've got a rodeo and then we have the huge Hispanic festival in that timeframe. Terry was able to secure some used chairs at a bang-up deal that are remnants of a different stadium. The regional athletic field, Luck Designs, has been engaged. BEDC will fund that design. And then we are expecting a future meeting between the city council and the BEDC board once we get to refinement of that before it hits the streets for qualified participants to be able to engage in what should be a private, a public-private partnership. So council approved the engineering RFQ. We are looking to potentially revise that to an IDIQ contract, which is indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, that would give staff some greater flexibility. We're weighing to see which is, which is the better tool for staff. Those of you who have potentially served in the military are aware of that tool. The wastewater treatment plant. This is the thing that keeps me up at night. We had an onsite meeting with BAR and KSA that I had informed the council about. It has yielded a positive path forward, at least on the part of the contractor. And the current goal is still April 2024 for operations. We did have good discussions with BAR today. There are several items that we can take care of and don't have to wait for a long-drawn-out legal or engineering review. And so we're moving forward with BAR. There are some large KSA items. And namely, the HVAC continues to be an issue. So we're trying to work through that. And perhaps we'll have some alternate arrangement to be able to open that, if not with the existing HVAC. The water treatment and the wells. It was a 28-month build-out as opposed to a 16-month build-out. So there is a potential $500,000 change order. We are working with the engineer to see how much we can reduce that change order. But for me, that's a double-edged sword because the water treatment plant and the wells are on target as to May and January. And so if I remove extra people out of that 500,000, do I risk that now not being in completion in January of '24? And as you know, we need water to be able to flush. And so water and the wastewater go hand-in-hand. But staff's working diligently to try to trim all of the fat off of that. Streets, which seems to be everybody's favorite topic these days. The HA5 project is on time and on budget. Staff has completed the crack ceiling and we're now doing cutout repairs in preparation for the coating. This expected completion is mid-summer of 2024. Street repair, Waterlinden and Farm were the ones that were identified in the repair list. Those became very, very expensive items as staff attempted to upgrade all of the underlying infrastructure that's in there to accommodate some of the densities allowed in the B3. Well, as we're revisiting those as part of the development code, I had Curtis go and televise the lines. Some of the, some of the lines do need repair in terms of wastewater treatment. And pipe bursting is a more economical solution than pulling up and digging up everything that's there. So we will be going down that path. And Water Street will most likely be the first street that is completed. Council did do a borrow several years ago. So there's a couple of million dollars in the bank that will address these three streets. And I'm hopeful that the new approach, not having to upgrade everything that's under there, will be sufficient to repair these three streets. And if not, we have the, the new sales tax dollars that go to the street fund that will be able to address the repair. We did a visit with a company called TerraPave that has alternative-staff pavement material that is water soluble, that is applied with a water truck. Very, very, very economical. We went to visit Slaughter Lane in Austin. And it was a, a site to see where this material was applied five years ago. And it was applied in the lanes, but it wasn't applied in the turning lane and it wasn't applied in the bike lane. And you can see the deterioration of the street versus what's there. We are going to do a proof of concept. And Piney Creek Bend will most likely be our first proof of concept because this really is extending the life of the street an additional five-plus years. Austin has had it on Slaughter Lane for more than five years and it looks wonderful. John Edleton and I went and paid a visit. And so this is just another tool in the toolbox that will help us extend the life of our streets. My goal is to incorporate this method into our street warranty period so that that becomes a portion of, before we accept the streets in finality, this is part of the warranty and that cost is borne by the developer and not continue to be off of our street fund. Lakey Lane is going to be at 60% design by the end of April. We're working with legal on the right-of-way necessary, needed from the surrounding property, which we know will be a potentially lengthy and legal-prone, I don't want to say battle, but need. Yes, endeavor. Agnes is at 60% design with 90% expected at the end of April. We have one additional easement we've been working on. And the expected completion date to that is fall of 2025. Financial Way, which was to serve the Moca Project in the industrial park, all the utilities are in. And it has expected completion in the first week of April 2024. So, any questions?
Council, any questions for our city manager? Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple. The Parks Plan, when are we going to adopt that?
Council has accepted the Parks Plan. I'm not sure that you're going to move to adoption of the Parks Plan. We can have a discussion on that.
Well, we, we had, you and I had a discussion. And I thought we needed to get it adopted in order to plan to apply for grants and things. It had to be an adopted plan.
I'm not sure which grant. Yes, you should have an adopted master plan. You shouldn't have something that's just an accepted master plan. I don't think there's anything contentious in that plan anymore that would prevent adoption since we have revisited the Mayfest Park. So I'm happy to bring that to council at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
And then, how often are we going to be getting these? Because as I told you earlier today, I think the last one you gave us was October. And there was one before that that's September, but there's nothing else online. Because I really, really, really like these. I know it's a lot, there's a lot going on. And our website is not the friendliest in searching for things. So I end up spending three hours trying to find stuff when I just really like this.
I, I will endeavor to do it monthly. It is, it is a monumental task. And we're not doing the quarterly report anymore because I, what I essentially did is I took that off of staff so they could have more time to do their work. That, that report was taking a staff member almost a week to do. So 25% of a $70,000 staff member seemed like a heck of a lot. But yes, I will endeavor to at least do them every other month, if not monthly.
That would be greatly appreciated. Because like I said, the, the bridge thing, I saw a post online and I was like, oh. And then the next day, they were there. I just, when people ask, I think I should be able to give them a little bit more information than, oh yeah, I saw it on social media. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Crouch.
I was just curious on the street, excuse me, the street repairs. What was the logic behind Piney Creek Bend being a test for that asphalt?
It's within a five-year, it's within a five-year period. It is still in relatively good shape. It would qualify for a chip seal at some points in the very near future, It would qualify for a chip seal at some points in the very near future, probably in the next two to three, so instead of doing that, this is probably a third the cost of that that gives you the same life expectancy or life extension.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes, Sylvia, I just wanted to thank you for putting up Waterlinden and Farm Street so that people know that that's happening, that's going to happen, because I think there was misunderstanding maybe in the community of, they thought maybe priorities weren't on that. It's just there's different phases and different needs, so thank you so much for putting that up there.
Yep, some streets just need a little bit of frosting, other streets need a lot of work, and then other streets need brand-new construction altogether, which is Blakey and Agnes.
Councilmember Crouch, you have another question? Thank you so much. City manager, have we learned any more about dirt?
So, Ms. Moore is here. Yes, they are planning to work dirt. The dirt is coming from a place in Smithville, is what I'm told by Ricky Hilbert, who hand-selected it himself. The hope is that they're going to rework the dirt that is there at Mayfest and then bring in the additional dirt and work that in. Terry, did I misstate anything?
Rock on.
Good.
And the announcer box has a scope of work, and we're accepting bids currently, so the goal is to have that bid awarded. That's not a very lengthy job, and the chair's installed around the same time.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think getting down to the bones is vitally important, and that. Councilmember Crouch, I see your lights back home.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to recognize everybody at the back table and the city manager and Franklin because all the stuff that just went through that report, and then the streets and the park and the rodeo arena, I'm sitting here looking, and I've seen every one of them out doing something somewhere constantly and beyond their normal work hours, and so thank you very much for all the time and effort that you're putting in, because it's, everybody in the city is going to be able to benefit that, so thank you all for all the work that you do.
Thank you. They do work very hard, seven days, 24 hours a day. They do not cease to answer their phone. There is one staff member I'd like to recognize, and I don't see him in the audience. Today, a police officer apprehended a subject or attempted to apprehend a subject who resisted arrest, and Curtis Irvin of BP&L was driving and stopped to assist this officer in the arrest that prevented the situation from escalating altogether. He is not in the audience today, so that just goes to show the teamwork that happens at Team Bastrop.
Outstanding, outstanding. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if you had any details to share about the deannexation of the movie studio and what the timeframe looks like on that, mainly just the timeframe.
So, they have submitted. Legal is working with their legal counsel. They have submitted not only deannexation, but also exit from the ETJ. Imminent, in as long a situation that that can take. I did see the article in the Austin Statesman. It's important to note that he already had a well and septic there on site, and so there is, in whatever manner he gets utilities to him, is going to be on his dime.
Any other questions for our city manager? Seeing none indicated, we'll move on. We have no work sessions or briefings tonight. We'll move to staff and board reports, and we'll receive our presentation for unaudited monthly financial report from Ms. McElwain, our chief financial officer, who was heading down the middle, now she decided to... She's on top of their game. Ms. McElwain.
Good evening. You have in front of you the January 2024 financial statements. We have a few funds that are in the red, but it is mostly due to timing. Our financial statements are strong. You can see that in our, for our revenues, the impact fee fund is in the red. Of course, we've discussed this for a couple of months now with developments coming online. We should see this kind of right itself. The hot tax fund is also one that's in the red. I think we were a little bit aggressive. I was not here in the budgeting process, but I think it was a little bit of an aggressive increase, so that may need to be righted a little bit. We are still in line or better off than we were last year in that fund. And then, the Hunter's Crossing pit, we received a large payment in February that we received in January in the prior year, so that's all a timing issue. Our vehicle and equipment replacement fund is the only one that we are in the red with our expenses. We purchase vehicles and equipment as they have become available. Once the money's gone, we'll quit spending, so that is just kind of, it's there, and the equipment is available, so we are going to take advantage of that so we can use it through the year. Our sales tax revenue has been up significantly in three of the last four months of this fiscal year. It's still coming in strong. Property tax revenue also is strong. Like I said, at the last council meeting, we received a large payment in January, which put us in line with our forecast. Projections are over by 25%, which was anticipated. We expected, it's also $300,000 more than in the prior year. General fund expenditures by department, police and engineering and public works are over their forecasted amount. These are due to some larger payments that were made, some annual payments that were made in December and January that just kind of knocked us over. That will correct itself as the month, probably in February or March, and be more in line with forecast. We're still solid in all of those areas. Our water wastewater, we are doing well with our revenue. We are 6.5% over in total for the month, through the month into January, as well as expenditures. Our expenditures are below forecasted, so that fund is also doing well. Our electric fund, we are 4.6% over forecast. We had a little bit of a down month, but we are still solid in collecting revenues for the electric fund. And the hotel occupancy tax revenue is down 28.8%, but we did not receive a December, a large payment until February 2nd, so you will see that kind of correct itself also in when I present the February financials. The expenditures for the hot fund are down significantly as we are only, we will not, this is a fund where we will not spend more than we have in it, so we are watching the revenues come in before we spend the money. We also have certain things that we're spending it on that we have not expended. Development services revenue, that looks like a significant monthly variance for January, but the way that they forecasted, it was spread evenly over 12 months, and so we are still very strong with being 15.8% over projections with our revenue, and our expenditures are significantly lower than forecasted. And that is all I have for you.
Counsel, any questions for our CFO? Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. So, I'm still comparing with previous years, and are we getting like, I found a summary from 2022, I think, online. It was very comprehensive. I know during budget time, we kind of dive into the monies more specifically when we do our budget workshops, but is that typically when we get that much of a detailed summary? Just during the workshops for budgeting?
Yes, this has been the historical of how you receive your monthly.
Because I'm, again, really concerned about being behind on these projects and how it's impacting our budget. Is there, what I was trying to find is something that would give me kind of a figure or a number of how much money we're not bringing in, how much revenue we're not bringing in because we are behind? Is that going to impact our fund balance? Was what I was looking for, that I couldn't find that anywhere other than the 2022 summary? What is our fund balance? Will the delay impact our fund balance to make up the difference? What projects, do you foresee any projects coming through within the next couple of months to help us get out of some of this red? Can you just kind of give me an idea on these projects? Why are they delayed? Are they city caused, development caused? I know you said there's some reengineering, but just a little bit more information for understanding.
I think what I can provide the council is the impact fee schedule and when we expect it to receive it. There are some projects that are coming online faster than others that aren't even in this projection. The one that's in this projection that has as low as Bastrop Grove, while it feels like it's going fast, it's not going as fast as we had originally projected, but I can bring the spreadsheet of who, what, and where. No, don't anticipate an impact to any of the fund balances because when the borrow, the largest borrow is made, they push that payment out to 2027. And so, we've got some timing issues that truly keep me up at night, and the wastewater treatment plant and the transfer lift station are two absolute priorities in order to have room to receive those impact fees. But we have a new tool that we'll talk about here in a little bit. We have a new tool with annexation that I just talked to the city attorney about today that'll help us begin to catch up. We have a project to the south called Ironwood that is ready, willing, and able, and so I believe we're going to catch up. I just don't believe we're going to catch up in a 12-month period.
The last question I have, oh, there were some budget amendments that were on our previous agenda, and they got removed. Are they, were they, were those amendments in the numbers we were just giving?
No. No, those won't be presented till 3/26 because we're still trying to figure out. We did add a fleet and facilities department, and so we've had to pare away that stuff that was in other people's budgets and put it away in this budget, so we're still sort of moving the coconuts and trying to have the least amount of impact.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions for our CFO? Thank you so much, Ms. McElwain. We will now move to citizen comments. Madam City Secretary, I have one for citizen comments. Do we have another?
No, ma'am.
Alrighty, we will call up Stacy Neef, if you will step up, write us your name and address, although I just said your name.
Yeah, you just said my name. I'll say it again.
You have three minutes.
Stacy Neef and I live out on Highway 304. I am not a city resident, but I do, I would say 99.9% of my business and my playtime here in the city of Bastrop, so I contribute to the economy. And I want to, again, thank you for your support of the community programs offered by the recreation department. You may recall I addressed the council a couple of months ago with facts and figures of your recreational program. Points highlighted at that time included promotion of health and wellness in the community, number of classes offered.
Try on top there. No, we need you to have a mic because they can't hear you up on, there's a button on the very top, on the very top.
There I am.
Much better, thank you.
Number of classes offered was mentioned. We have 32 regular scheduled adult classes, and we have approximately up to four youth classes that are provided each week. Diversity of classes to support all segments of the community. We have a number of attendees. I provided a list of, or a figure for the number of attendees per month. The class sizes have increased. We have to limit the number of attendees to 32, and there is a waitlist for several of these classes. We requested possibility of additional space for a second location. We talked to, we invited all of you to visit the rec and engage in activities with your constituents. We encouraged the council to move on a recreational facility and a public pool up on your list of things to do. We've talked about the facility size, lack of parking, traffic, and so on, and so on, and so on. The Y closed in December of 2020, and the rec opened up in July of 2021. The third-year anniversary is coming up this summer. The success of the rec is due to the quality of the instructors, the availability of classes, and the leadership of our department. Over the past three months, you've heard from a number of instructors, members, employees of the rec. Rec supporters sit in your audience in support of recreational improvements. We know there's a long-range plan. I would like to ask the council, what is the next step for this outstanding need? Where is a recreation facility on the list of priorities? Has a timeline been actively initiated? Is there a council member who is spearheading this effort? And how does this get on the agenda? And I may be misspeaking myself because I just heard tonight that there is activities that have to do with Mayfest Park and a regional athletic field, which I'm not familiar with. What exactly does that mean? Is that Little League fields? Is that a regional adult type of activities for, you know, adult team sports? So, those things I don't know, and we would like to just have that information. We would like to know what's going on. We've been here for like three months petitioning, talking about, some people griping, some people praising the recreational program that you have, and I believe that you've heard enough, and we would, and there's more to come, I'm sure, but we would just like to know, where is this on the list of priorities? We know that there is a plan, a long-range plan. 2025 seems so far off, and 2026 seems even farther, and I can't see that these classes are going to shrink. I can't see that the needs that we're going to need...
I don't mean to cut you off, but three minutes has expired.
Okay, great.
I will say for the benefit of the community, the parks and recreation is a vitally important topic for everybody on council, and I'm looking to the city manager to see if at some time in the next two or three council meetings, we could have a report on where we are in our park planning. A lot of it has to do with facilities, we know that, we just don't have the appropriate facilities to do that, and we need to move on that. We do recognize that, but we appreciate your comments.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Mayor, for the council's edification, it will not even be a topic of consideration until we discuss the budget.
Agreed.
So, that's in late summer and the fall.
We need to let the community know that we are working at it. There's a temporal factor to it, that's for sure.
Sure. Alternate solutions, alternate locations are being sought, but again, it's a matter of a budget implication.
I think everybody on this dice is looking for alternative facilities in and about town, so it's something that we're eagerly searching for. Thank you so much. If there are no other citizen comments, we will move to the consent agenda. Does anybody on the dice wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is anybody in the audience wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing no such move, madam city secretary, if you will call the roll. Read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the February 27, 2024 regular meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2024-28 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a joint agreement between the city of Bastrop and Bastrop Central Appraisal District, Bastrop Independent School District, the city of Smithville, Smithville Independent School District, the city of Elgin, Elgin Independent School District, Lexington Independent School District, McDade Independent School District, and Bastrop County Municipal Utility District Number One for the May 4, 2024 general election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing an effective date submitted, effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2024-07 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 1.10 Parks, Section 1.10.001 Parks Board, and providing for findings of fact, repilers, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. This concludes the consent agenda.
Move to our proof.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Plunkett, a second from councilmember Lee. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move on to item 9A. Hold a public hearing and consider action to approve resolution number R-2024-25 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, granting historic landmark status for 0.4670 acres of Farm Lot 1 west of Main Street, also known as 1301 Church Street, within the city limits of the city of Bastrop, Texas, as attached in exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, providing for a subpoena clause, and establish an effective date. Ms. Higgins.
Good evening, council. So, before you, this first item that I have for you is the designation for 1301 Church Street. It was built sometime between 1858 and 1867. The dates aren't exact, just based on the record keeping back then. One interesting fact about this house is it's kind of cool. You can see on the picture A, B, and C. A and B are proposed to be two separate dwellings that were originally at the academy, and they were used as residents for the academy, and at some point, they were moved onto this property and connected. Where you see C, they were connected into one building. This building is, it qualifies under a couple of different standards, but the two that we had noted was it exemplifies the method of construction being made from local material as well as the use of the hand-mortised joints was really interesting on this house, but it also establishes a very familiar visual feel because this house has been there for a very long time, and it's very characteristic of the small, of the like similar small houses that we have here in Bastrop. Yeah, it was, the owner had requested historic landmark designation for this house.
Great. Counsel, do I have any question for Ms. Higgins before we move to the public hearing? hearing? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I just have a question because I don't, I don't know the answer. So I read, in the packet, it stated that a notice went out to, is, does making that a historical landmark impact neighbors? Why does a letter go out?
So it's because it's for a public hearing. Any public hearing has to be-
Oh, okay. I didn't know if there was, it was gonna impact them in some form or fashion, or neighbors when a house is deemed historical, or a building is deemed historical.
It'll impact the property owner themselves. That's why we also send them the, the letter of impact before the meeting. So essentially, it, it's, it's mostly, sorry, mostly focused on the property owner, but not, just to kind of like let the neighbors around it have it, have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Councilperson Lee, I have a very related question. And, and it comes to the need for the public hearing. And I know the reason why we have a need for the public hearing is because the code says we have to have one. But unless we can come up with a reason why we think we need to keep that, I suggest we change it because that's silly, in my opinion.
It requires two public hearings currently. It requires a public hearing in front of Historic Landmark Commission, as well as a public hearing in front of y'all.
And I don't object to having a vote or going to those commissions, but having to do the public hearing meant we couldn't put this on consent agenda, and it just, it seemed like-
Is that our, our code, though?
It's just a, there's no tax legislature.
It's exclusively our building code that requires this. And I'm just kind of thinking-
It's something I can very easily update, and I can bring y'all some ordinance amendment.
Why do we have to do that? That seems excessive. And, and it's fits, you know, well, does it matter? Why do we have to do that? Well, it's kind of the same question, but maybe...
We actually, we will, we will be bringing that ordinance amendment for y'all for next council.
Okay, there you go.
Oh.
To, to remove the requirement of a public hearing in front of y'all. It will still have a public hearing in front of Historic Landmark Commission. It just won't require a second public hearing in front of y'all. But it will still come to y'all.
Thank you.
Easily done. Easily done. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I'm pretty sure I heard you say that the owner did request it.
Yes, yes. Both of the two, I'll be bringing y'all two today, and both of them were initiated and requested by the owner. Because it does give them a tax benefit, as well as it gives them a plaque, and they're included in our historic Bastrop.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, you have another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I was disappointed that, as I read here, Kestles, one of the most distinguished citizens of Bastrop in the last half century, didn't join us today, so.
He was at the HLC meeting at least.
Yes, he was.
He was. Any further questions before we open up the public hearing? If not, we will look at, open, we will hold, open a public hearing. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody wishes to speak on this item?
No, ma'am.
Well, that makes it easy to close the public hearing, and we've done so. If there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from councilmember Myers, a second from councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, madam city secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Move to item nine B. Consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero two four dash two four. The city council, city of Bastrop, Texas, accepting a donation from the McCall family of an ornamental iron fence valued at a to-be-determined amount, and to be determined at this meeting, for use at Fairview Cemetery. Authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establish an effective date. Ms. McElwain?
Board, I am here to bring to you the resolution R twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, for the donation from the McCall family of an ornamental iron fence in the amount of seven thousand dollars to be used in the cemetery.
How do we value that?
Council, you have a revised, there's an amended resolution. When the agenda was posted, we did not have the value of that fence at that time.
And how did we value it?
Mayor Pro Tim, I think Mr. Plunkett had his light on. Mr. Plunkett, please.
I just wanted, sorry. I just wanted to say that I went and inspected the fence, and with Robbie Sanders, our chair of the cemetery board, and she feels like, and also Curtis Hancock was there as well to, and we all agreed that it was in good shape and we could make good use of it. And so, yeah, I think it's a, a very nice donation. They're wanting to do a, a more historical, because that's a very historical property. It's one of the oldest houses in Bastrop, I believe. And, and so they're trying to get it back as much as possible to the, the way it looked, you know, when it was built. And so I think this is a great win-win for the city and for the homeowners. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Are you comfortable with that value?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, Sylvia, the, the idea was to look and see, you know, about what that cost per foot. And we, I was there when we measured it, and, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cost per foot of historic ornamental iron fence.
Goodness gracious. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, you had a question, comment?
Yeah, just about the value. I, I looked up scrap value and made some phone calls today, and it wasn't, wasn't very much. If I estimated it at one point four tons, it was a hundred and eighty-three dollars. So I was just curious how we came up with the value.
The fence is actually in, in very good reusable condition.
Great, 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 yeah.
Little more than scrap.
Yeah, excellent. I have a question for Ms. Sanders. How do you think that we'll use it at the cemetery? How do you think we'll use it at the cemetery? What ideas do you have for it?
Ms. Sanders, you come up to the microphone so people at home can, can hear your wonderful explanation.
You didn't know you were gonna be talking today, did you?
No, I didn't. I would, of course, want to get input. We would. The board would want input from everyone. And then the board would want to make decisions and thought, have thoughts on it. But there are some possibilities. We're building a new columbarium, and it might be a decorative feature around that. We have some property in front of a cemetery that maybe could use some enhancement. It's more of an enhancement fence. It's not really a security fence in my mind, but it could be used to make things look, look nice in, in maybe some of the newer sections that need a little help. But so far, I, I haven't entertained any other thoughts about, we just know that it's a wonderful addition or could be.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer?
I just wanted to thank the McCall family for their donation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Plunkett?
Sorry, that was left on for before. But yeah, I would also like to thank the McCall family. They were very generous, and it was a pleasure to go around and, and inspect it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion from councilmember Meyer, and a second from councilmember Crouch. Is that where I heard it from? Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, madam city secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Ms. Sanders, and, and thank you to, to the McCall family, for sure. We will move on to item nine C. Hold a public hearing and consider action to approve resolution number R two zero two four dash two six of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, granting historic landmark status for zero point five three one acres at a farm lot, block thirty-six, east of Main Street, within the city limits of the city of Bastrop, Texas, commonly known as the Willis Old Miley House, as attached in exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, providing for repealing clause, and establish an effective date. Ms. Higgins?
I am back. So this is the second one I'm bringing y'all for tonight. It's another homeowner that has requested designation as well. This too, very old home, very historic here in Bastrop. It was built circa eighteen ninety. And one interesting thing about this one is it was actually signed by Alfred Griesenbeck. When they were doing some renovations inside, they removed the, the panels, and they found his signature on the original hardwood on, on, on the, on the walls. And she actually has that framed in her house. She, she kept it to make sure that it was able to be, to be seen. This one too, the, the pictures, I don't know, the technology didn't cooperate with me on those pictures. But it's, it's, the house is in beautiful condition, and it, it has many qualifying factors, like two of them are the fact that it's already on the national register. It's been on the National Register of Historic Places since nineteen seventy-eight. And it also exemplifies craftsmanship of a very specific period. It's a very good example of a, of a small Victorian home.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Higgins?
I don't know. But I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, you have to have a public hearing.
Which will change next time.
Yes, which hopefully will change. The, I'm now opening a public hearing. Madam City Secretary, if anybody wishes to speak on this item?
No, ma'am.
Easily done. I will close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
I'll restate my motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion from councilmember Lee, a second from councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, madam city secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Thank you, council. We will move on to item nine D. Consider an act upon an application from Bastrop Old Town Visitor Center for an event known as Yesterfest, for twenty thousand dollars for a grant from the hotel tax fund to fund a uniquely Bastrop event. Madam City Manager?
May as well stay up here. Good afternoon, council. Long time no see. This is exactly what it is. At, I believe it was at the beginning of my interview, one of the things that the council talked about were many events that had gone by the wayside, Halloween and Yesterfest being those things. And so we partnered with the museum last year to put Yesterfest on, and they, they made a yeoman's effort with just a portion of this dollar amount. They want to continue that effort and have plans in, in the event for period people, and that the museum is here to explain further what the event would consist of. But in your packet, you have a detailed expense sheet, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I have a question. Oops, sorry. So this is, the request is to take funds from Visit Bastrop to fund this event, correct? And the Corvette Invasion?
Not the Corvette Invasion. So the-
The Corvette Invasion, that twenty thousand's not coming from-
No, no. So the festival, because that was a relatively new event, we didn't, we didn't claw that back from Visit Bastrop.
Okay.
The Corvette Invasion also was funded from the city because we thought that was a relatively large event. This one is a, more of a regional event, and the hot fund is down a little bit, so we thought it would make sense that this event would come out of the Visit Bastrop. Seventy-five thousand, that would have been allocated for events.
So two questions, because in the packet, it was stated that they, that some of these groups are applying for the funds directly through the city, and then you're determining where we can pull from or take it out of the pool. One, or at least, does Visit Bastrop, do we know have these funds allocated that we would be?
No, I'm not aware. And the, the thought about those larger events, there was some discussion as to whether Corvette Invasion met any of the metrics. And again, the festival was a brand new one, so we opted not to take it from them. The rest of the requests should go to Visit Bastrop.
And, and because I was just, I wanted to make sure that people in organizations wanting these funds understand what the process is. Do they come to the city? Do they go to the organization? Are we, are we looking at changing that process so that they do come to the city for oversight? I think it's important that the organizations know, hey, they went to the city, I can just go to the city. Or should, will, will we be defining where they need to go for specific events?
Yes, I have a meeting with Visit Bastrop tomorrow, and Visit Bastrop is looking to revamp the hotel fund distribution. For the record, I'm not in agreement with how they plan to do that. They would like to do that via reimbursement, which for events like this would make an event or a smaller event not able to occur. So we want to talk through that. But for now, the, all of the events should still apply to Visit Bastrop. I know that they have four in front of them. I don't know what four. I did have an event reach out this morning and say, hey, we've applied for a while, and it's still sitting there. And it's difficult to market when we don't know where our funding is going to come from.
Okay. Is there a specific reason why people would reach out to Visit Bastrop versus, let's say, an event had something to do with birds, birds are coming up, and they go to the cultural arts commission? Is there a reason, are there specific reasons why someone might reach out to Visit Bastrop for hot funds versus another board or commission or organization to start that process?
So that, that is a very good question, because it is a big hodgepodge right now. So the cultural arts does receive some hot funds as part of the arts component of the hot funds. And so you do have some folks go there. They have the mini grant program that they award. Visit Bastrop has the vast majority of that seventy-five thousand dollar pot that gets awarded to various entities around. So there, there is a couple of distribution sites for hot funds, and we do need to prioritize that better.
That's what I think needs to happen. Because I got a little confused.
No.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Trust me. And, and hopefully, there will be a, a much better and clearer process moving forward. I'm just concerned that some of the smaller events will not have the support that they need.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yeah, following on, on questions of councilperson Lee, if this one is going to be funded in effect by Visit Bastrop's budget, why did it not go to them for like determination of amounts and, and such?
It did, it did go through the Visit Bastrop. But again, they're going through a hot fund process revamp, and this event is fast approaching.
Okay. I do have, I have a concern, and I also want Nicole to, to kind of speak to it a little bit. But when you look at the economic impact post-event reports from last year, something like Corvette Invasion on hotel nights, business sales, tax collection, total spending is anywhere from four point five X greater to nine X greater, depending on which metric you look at. And they received twenty thousand dollars. And I have been told that several years back, say, four or five years back, that council pushed the hot fund determination to Visit Bastrop because it turned into a-
Very political, yes.
Political football, right? And as we take some of these activities and do some of those things, I feel a cautionary sense of not quite doom, but just like, oh, wait a second, coming on. Because it comes from this perspective of, if we set, say, metrics on ROI for, and it can be, you know, completely open for discussion, and I don't even have a proposal for it. But if we base it up on something that's a number, and we say, okay, you know, if you're gonna have this much economic impact, or this much tax collection, or this much, whatever the thing is, then we'll fund, you know, equal to that amount, or twice that amount, or one half, whatever, you know, the, the policy would end up looking like. And, and then that gets rid of the problem of, but you gave that much to them, you know, it, it becomes a, well, no, no, each event is independently set based upon the, the metrics that, that, that you can show either historically or, you know, based upon your work now. And I know that, and this was kind of where it goes to Nicole, right? So I know that you have a plan to grow it this year, to, to do more with it in the marketing and in some of the performers. And I, we're not quite to you talking yet, but I, I would like to, I don't know, learn more about that and what, how, I don't know, you kind of have to project or model, you know, how we think that's going to impact the attendance, and just what we think, what do we think right now? What is our, what is our best guess on, on how much that helps and, in, in the growth of that?
So I, I'd like to address that, that very comment, because that's the path Visit Bastrop is going to right now, on an ROI, simply an ROI. And I think that has a disparate impact on what made Bastrop even unique to begin with. All of the live music, all of the plays, things like Yesterfest that made Bastrop so cool and kitschy, that may not have had a head in a bed, but it certainly, it certainly had something for those folks who were already here, for whatever reason, to have something to do. And that also checks the box. So I think that there are events that have a regional flair, such as Yesterfest, that, that do attract, that do feed into the sales tax, that do give our hotel vacationers a place to come and join and visit and see what Bastrop was, versus those folks who are coming specifically for an event like- for an event like Corvette Invasion, which, you know, had a big draw when Coda was involved, and we've seen a decline last year, and we'll see what that does this coming year, and revisit their allocation in the following years. But to head down that path really, for me, causes, it's going to cause some heartburn. And that's because those smaller events that, for example, a live music performance at any one of our venues, that is awesome if I'm staying at the Hyatt or I'm staying at a hotel downtown, and I, my workday is over, and I want to be able to come visit something, I have an opportunity to go. If we start to do those on a reimbursement basis, we go down a super slippery slope where it would be very hard for anybody to qualify.
Well, I'm not, I didn't use the phrase reimbursement, and I wasn't basing it on hotel nights or purely hot tax generation.
An ROI.
Certainly, you have to generate hot tax in order to qualify, but this event does, so you check that box and you move on. I was just looking at it on the total economic impact, you know, some metric in there, like funding it proportional to its overall economic impact, projected, I'm even suggesting you could still fund it upfront, but that it would be a step on a projected economic impact.
Oh, okay, got it. That's a good meet in the middle.
Yeah.
As opposed to-
Because the money is collected from hotel guests, and then granted to, granted is the wrong word, but given to the city. And then the city has a specific number of things that it can use that money on that ultimately is meant to improve tourism, increase activity within the hotels, and then a specific set of categories that you can spend the money on. And all of the expenses requested here fits that category, you know, no concern at all with any of that. I'm just, at some point, you have to be able to justify why a particular event qualifies for $5,000, or $10,000, or $20,000, or go crazy, and it's a $100,000 event.
I understand.
Right? And you have to be able to, not justify, but defend why you do it in a certain way so that the next person that comes along, you have a model that fits.
Sure. From an emotional perspective, and I think that's where council, I think that's where we fell into that big giant chasm, because for the lack of a super-defined process, because even when Visit Bastrop took it, there was no super-defined process. So, the lack of a super-defined process puts us all at a point where it does become a matter of favorites, it does become a matter of historical, it does become a matter of nostalgia. So, I'm all for, I'm all for creating some sort of metric. I just would hate to see it be on a reimbursement. And I know that's not you, but I know that's our discussion at Visit Bastrop.
Yeah, it has to be consistent and appropriate criteria. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, one of the problems, yeah, I've been on, I was on the Visit Bastrop Board for a really long time, from pretty much its inception, and it's been something that's always been a struggle. It was a struggle before it was given to Visit Bastrop because of this, you know, we talk about. The problem with any narrow set of metrics is the fact that there are an unlimited number of types of events. So, whatever the criteria is, it needs to be very broad in terms of, you know, maybe it doesn't make hotel nights, but it makes cellphone pings, or, you know, there's all these different technologies out there now that can give you places where you can check a box. And, you know, maybe it checks one box and not another, maybe it checks five boxes out of three, out of eight, or whatever. Three, that'd be pretty good. But I think, whatever we do, it needs to be, we need to give the opportunity for events that don't fit in a box, a way to get help, a way to get, you know, some traction. Because the idea was to increase the number and variety of events in town, and they do have a tremendous economic impact. As somebody who often benefits from those events, you know, I fully understand and support, because I know my sales tax, you know, payment, you know, goes up every time we have a successful event, and that's what it's supposed to do. That's great. So, just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you, sir. I think it's about time to hear the program or event specifics from Ms. Wood and Mr. Guzman, perhaps, or one or both, or all collectively. Y'all can do it in stereo if you so desire. I think council would like to know a little bit more what your expectations are for the event. I know we had kicked it off last year after several years of not having it, and now y'all are hoping to advance it even further.
So, good evening. My name is Nicole De Guzman with the Museum Visitor Center, and I have with me Nancy Wood, our Director of Special Events, and this has really been Nancy's baby, so I'm going to let her talk about it.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you very much. Yes, Mayor, Council, Yesterfest has a unique history with Bastrop. It's almost 30 years old. And there was a time period prior to last year of about five or six years when the event was not held. The event, it's my understanding, is codified in the city's event, okay, I've got my words wrong. What, sorry? Event ordinance, thank you. And so, because it's there, and because it's preserved, and because it's uniquely Bastrop, it was important to bring it back. The opportunity came in working with the museum and visitor center because the statute, the Texas statute specifically says that hotel occupancy tax can be used for events that support a museum and/or a visitor center in the vicinity. And we wanted to bring back what was uniquely Bastrop. We've kept it small last year, wonderful response from the community. This year, it's important, and we understand that, it's important to draw from outside the community. We just had a meeting at 4:30 today, which we're pretty excited about, because we're going to put something together for Friday night so that people will come, want to stay, and take advantage of Friday night offering and a Saturday day event. It will still be smaller. Yesterfest, at a time when the Downtown Business Alliance was alive, was a huge Main Street, takeover Main Street, four blocks of it, and we're not there yet. So, we are going to keep it on Pine Street and Water Street, grow it a little bit. We have wonderful, George Rollo is on the, he's here in costume, George Rollo is our reenactor coordinator. Stacy is here, she's our vendor coordinator. So, we're pretty excited about, still a small event, growing it, and then looking at what we can do next year. And I'm just putting this out there, we are working with the American Chuck Wagon Association to possibly get on their calendar for 2025 with this event. But we have reserved the Saturday of Memorial Weekend every year going forward. So, we need marketing money.
Outstanding. Any questions for these event organizers? Councilmember Crouch?
I was curious when I first read this, as far as the newspaper advertising, because I was, when I first just glanced over it, I was like, who advertises in newspapers anymore? And then I saw the range of what you were doing and where it was going. So, I think it's really good that it's going out a lot more regionally and out of just the Bastrop area. So, I'm glad you're doing it, and I'm glad to see that it's expanding and going out a little bit further than just Bastrop. So, thank y'all for doing that.
Yes, thank you. One of my learnings from last year was that not only do you get newspaper ads, but you get digital marketing now from newspapers, so.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes. Mine is more of a comment, but I remember volunteering Nancy 30-something years ago when it was huge, and it was so exciting that it was brought back last year. And I appreciate you asking me to volunteer, because it was amazing. And I know that this is one of those events that is critical, as Sylvia says, these are what makes Bastrop authentic. It really is. And it's so important to keep this and grow this and fund this. So, I just want to say thank you, and thank you, Nicole, too, and I look forward to it being bigger and better every year.
And you're on the volunteer list.
She's not alone. Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes, last year, I was also a volunteer. I wore my Yester vest and walked around and helped people. So, tell me about, I saw in the packet that you have plans to grow your marketing, and if you were building an IT thing or an engineering thing, I'd have an opinion on how effective it would be. And so, when I ask you, why do you think that's going to work, or how is that, why do you think that's going to be effective, or how is that going to help you grow things? It's because I don't know the answer. And so, I mean, are you working with like a consultant, or does your organization already have experience in that so that you know how to kind of go and do that? And like, how would you, how would you respond to that in general?
We do marketing all the time.
Okay.
We have a couple of select companies that we work with, select sales reps, and they make their suggestions based on our market size and our event, and then they give us really dynamic reporting at the end.
Okay.
They can even, a lot of times, if it's a digital ads, they can give us reporting live as it's happening, and we can make adjustments as needed.
Is there any form of, like, the cellphone, there's a name for that data?
Bing.
Well, but yes.
To the best of our knowledge, that is available through, or at one point was available through Visit Bastrop, and we've got numbers from them in the past, but I don't know the status of that right now.
Okay, fair enough.
That report by Retail Coach is now available through EDC.
Got it.
Okay, nothing else. Thank you.
Councilmember Crouch, you had additional questions? No further questions? We appreciate all the efforts y'all put forward.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We do have an additional speaker on this. Sean Plesh wishes to speak on this item.
First of all, I want to say I am on the board of Visit Bastrop, but I'm not here as a board member. I'm here as one of the originators of Yesterfest, and probably, you know, between Nancy and I, it's biggest supporter. So, I think yay, 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 you know, whatever we need to do to bring back Yesterfest. I have a bunch of signs still in my garage, schedules and events, and I think that-
Are you just going to black out the dates?
Yeah, we could probably still use them. But I have a problem with what went out in the staff report. So, I just wanted to talk about it, because I don't think normal people, I know y'all do, but I don't think most people understand the whole funding mechanisms and what they're predicated on and why. And I just want to read from the law here. It says, "Communities with successful tourism promotion programs condition the amount of hotel occupancy tax revenue that is awarded to the proportionate impact of the event on tourism and hotel activity incident to the funding request." So, that basically says, if you're asking for $10,000, you're expected to bring in $10,000. I mean, it's pretty simple at that point. There's two parameters, of course. There's the ever-present, Texas Two-Step, they call it, to determine whether or not it will put heads in beds. And our organization, Visit Bastrop, did, all those things were true that y'all talked about, there was a lot of politics. Council, you should have do. Council did not want to be involved in it, because it was just awful. So, it was determined that the professionals in the marketing businesses would know more how to allocate resources. Our $75,000 that we were given was determined to be used as an incubator for events, to grow them. So, our original policy cut off at three years, because after three years, if you couldn't stand on your own, you don't need any more money from us. So, the concern that I have is that last year, we brought, we brought it back. We, Visit Bastrop gave $10,000. I don't know that the city gave anything directly. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we, they asked for $10,000, we gave them $10,000. This year, they asked for 20. We have received the $75,000 allocation. We have a, we have an application. We were considering it. But what Sylvia was talking about, where you get in, you get in these big events, like Corvette Invasion was 20, Cult was 20, Yesterfest was 20, and now we're out of money. So, we don't have any money for the little things that we wanted to incubate. So, my question, and I think that this is a good, I'm sorry, this can't be seen by y'all. But last year, on the $10,000 that we gave Yesterfest, y'all can at least see the lines. This right here is the same amount of funding that they got. This line down here is Corvette Invasion. They had 100 and some odd rooms, 100 and some odd rooms.
Sean, if you will, try to speak into the mic as much as possible. People at home can hear you.
Okay. So, Corvette Invasion delivered 140,000, 140 rooms on the money that we gave them. The $10,000 that Yesterfest got, they delivered seven rooms. Now, they're asking for more money, twice as much money. I hope they give more than 14 rooms. But despite the fact that it's a legit allocation, what Visit Bastrop is looking to do is to use its money more wisely to incubate events that would have a larger draw, like throwing a rock in the pond. My question is, the city has money. The city has lots of money for these kinds of events. We have already funded Cultura. We have already funded a couple of other things in our in-talks, I understand, with other things. My question is, why would Visit Bastrop fund this particular thing? Why doesn't the city fund it, just like they fund the other events? I am suggesting that based on all of the, all of the work I just quickly did this afternoon, I am suggesting that we need a two-tiered policy. One, for the uniquely Bastrop things, much as you fund the Opera House and the Juteeth and those kinds of things. If there's something like Yesterfest that I am a major fan of, it's not going to bring back the econ, you made the point, it's not going to bring, it's not going to bring back the economic impact of heads in beds. It's not. I mean, even when we had it in the golden days, it didn't make that much money. The reason that we had it and worked so hard for it was because we thought somebody, you know, somebody's grandparents were coming, and they thought our little town was so cute that they would come back. And that did ultimately happen, but it doesn't meet the strict parameters of the $75,000 that we were allocated. So, I am proposing that we, we are indeed, as Sylvia said, revising our policy to make it not so much as she's saying that if we did the redemption at the end, if we give the money at the end, that we would preclude these events from happening. They need money in the front end, because they couldn't have the event if they didn't have marketing, or they didn't have printing, or they couldn't have a radio ad. So, that's the strength of our policy that we're working on right now. She's presented it several times. I still think we need to do it. And now, we need to introduce this other element that says, is it uniquely Bastrop? Or is it heads in beds? Don't forget that this money is supposed to help the hotel industry and us. So, I'm a little concerned that somehow it's going to turn around and come right back out of our budget again. If that's the case, why didn't we just budget it in the first place? And then we wouldn't have had any money left. So, I don't understand why the city's going to take the money from Peter and pay Paul. The last thing is, this comment about the redemption policy, pardon me, the reimbursement policy would prevent events such as Yesterfest from coming to fruition is absolutely wrong, dead wrong. is absolutely wrong, dead wrong. You have to have some kind of auditing and reckoning. If somebody comes to you and says, I want $50,000, but, and you give them whatever we've determined the amount to be upfront, you give them that, but then they don't deliver but three rooms, you've already given them the $50,000, where's the accountability? So, I want y'all to think about that. I think we all need to work together, believe me, we all want Yesterfest to happen, I don't care how it happens now, you know, let's all throw in our dimes into the hat. But this topic obviously needs more attention, so I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, mayor and council, if I could address that quickly.
Want me?
No, I'm good, thank you. This is exactly why there's obviously a disconnect on Visit Bastrop and what it's meant to fund. There is no statutory requirement for determining the level of impact an event must have to satisfy the requirement to directly promote tourism, hotel, and convention activity. There is no direct statutory requirement. Council makes that determination. There is a statutory requirement that to do, it does promote tourism, that you must advertise to the people in the hotels, you must have those folks attend. There is, this is performing arts, a great portion of this is performing arts, and it is historic. So, to me, this is the giant disconnect between Visit Bastrop and the rest of the community, i.e. the community assets who have a lot to do and a lot to say about what makes Bastrop unique.
Council, we have any questions for the event organizers or for our staff? Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. She does make a, a good point, though, in a sense of the, we have $4 million in hot funds, correct? Am I, is that number about right, or?
Correct, but you just saw the, the CFO tell you hot funds are down from a very aggressive projection.
I did see that, I did see that. However, my question is going to be, because also in the packet, there was, there was a statement made about we do have an aggressive use of those funds. So, what do you anticipate the use dwindling it down to by the end of fiscal year, not using 20,000 for, for, from Visit Bastrop?
Well, I think, I think primarily, had this been in front of Visit Bastrop, they were not going to fund the $20,000, which was needed as seed money to get this event up and running. That, again, is a codified event, and council expressed interest in bringing this event back. So, for an event that council wants to bring back, council gets to determine what that implication is, because again, there's no statutory requirement of how much that is.
Well, that's not my question, though. My question is, with everything that we already know we're going to be using hot funds for, by the end of fiscal year, where will we be as an estimate in terms of funds for that?
Um, we're going to be aggressively ahead, and that is because we're missing a Main Street manager, and so a lot of those expenses, there's about 342,000, less 50,000, so there's about 290,000 in the Main Street that are hot fund-related expenses. We have been holding down expenses significantly, because that position has been vacant since December. So, there will be a residual surplus in the hot fund that falls back to fund balance.
And that's not a consideration, why?
Um, because I think there were two larger events that have already been funded by the city, as opposed to Visit Bastrop, out of the 75. Corvette Invasion, by their own admission in an email, they would have funded, but because it's a rather large draw out of the 20, as was the other festival, I thought this was a meat in the middle.
Got you, thank you.
Is that it? Any other questions, comments? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move on to item 9E, Consider An Act On Application From SRE Promotions LLC For An Event Known As The Corvette Invasion For $1,300 For A Grant From The Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund To Fund A Corvette Car Show. Madam City Manager.
Um, mayor and council, you have revised financials that you should have received that are in front of you on the dais. At the last council meeting, the $20,000 request was reduced to 18.7, based on what they could defend. The Corvette Invasion group has submitted additional expenses to defend the rest of that 20,000, which amounts to $1,300.
Pretty straightforward, any questions for our city manager? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? None indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move on to item 10, the executive session, we have two items on there. Item 10A, City Council Shall convene And Close Executive Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.171 and 551.074 To Seek The Advice Of Legal Counsel And Discuss The City Manager's Employment Agreement Regarding Residency. Item 10B, City Council Shall Convene And Close Executive Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 To Seek The Advice Of Legal Counsel Regarding Regulatory Franchise And Contractual Issues Involving Ambulances Services. It is 8:07, council is in executive session. It is 9:03, council is out of executive session and back into open session. On item 10A, I believe we have some action.
Move To Approve Addendum Number Two To The Employment Agreement Between The City Of Bastrop And Sylvia Correio.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch, I have a second. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion does pass. On item 10B, there will be no action, we will move to item 12, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We stand adjourned.
Man, I can't believe you let me do that. I could feel the pressure.
Happy Thanksgiving. What are you doing? All right. Thank you.